There's a lot of lunch over here.
I'm glad.
I saw your, I saw the email. A few items that our staff would like to add, one of them being the Sunnyside Marketing Plan, the City Council Meetings Discussion, Dog Breeding Ordnance Discussion. Is there any objection to adding this to our agenda?
No objection.
Thank you. And can I get a motion for the desired council for the, for the agenda? We need to approve it.
Make a motion to approve the updated act of agenda.
I'll second, oh, you can take that, Councilor Ripley.
I have a motion by Councilor Raskis and a second by Councilor Ripley to approve the agenda as amended. Any debate?
No, no debate.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? I also vote aye. Motion passes. Invocation, do we have anybody for invocation? Please stand and remain standing, standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious God, bless all involved in this meeting tonight. Bless especially those who have responsibilities to govern and run our city, our mayor and city council members, and our city manager, and all city employees. I pray in gratitude, especially for our city police department and our fire department, who keep all residents safe. May decisions made by our city council benefit all Sunnyside residents. May God bless us all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, recognition. I think Sergeant Rodriguez is still out there partying, so do we want to? Yeah, he could do the next one.
The next one will take over, Mike and I. So I present this to Deputy Mayor and I'll just read what it's for. Okay, so Deputy Mayor George Galván recently earned a certificate of municipal leadership from the Association of Washington Cities. AWC Certificate of Municipal Leadership Program recognizes city and town elected officials for accomplishing training in five core areas. One, roles, responsibilities, and legal requirements. Two, public sector resource management. Three, community planning and development. Four, effective local leadership. And five, diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Deputy Mayor Galván completed more than 30 hours of training to earn this distinction. AWC serves its members through advocacy, education, and services, founded in 1933. AWC is a private, nonprofit, nonpartisan corporation that represents Washington's 281 cities and towns before the state legislature, the state executive branch, and the regulatory agencies. AWC also provides training, data, and publications and programs such as AWC Employee Benefit Trust, AWC Risk Management Service Agency, AWC Workers' Comp Retro, AWC Drug and Alcohol Consortium, and AWC GIS Consortium. So congratulations Deputy Mayor for earning this certificate.
Thank you. So up next, we have-
That was it? Say a few words or something.
Let me say something. Well, I encourage my fellow counselors to-
He's gonna train us. I'm catching up.
There's, there's, there's a lot of information there, so it's, 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 it's very good, valid information. You know, I just took time and it's free, right? You go on there on the AWC and a lot of it is free. At first, you know, I was even paying some out of pocket, but I figured out that if I waited a month or two, they put it on there for free and you submit your name and there you go. So yeah, I just encourage council to check it out. And you know, my goal was to reach the 30 points my first year. I missed it. I did get 28 last year and then I got the rest in January. So yeah.
Yeah, congratulations.
Good job, yeah. And we're gonna get there too, right?
Okay. So up next, Melissa Rodriguez. So I wrote something, a little something. Tonight, tonight we recognize Sergeant Melissa Rodriguez for her 35 years of dedicated service to our community. Throughout her career, she has made a lasting impact as a school resource officer and through her leadership in the great program, guiding and mentoring countless youth. Known for her toughness, professionalism, Sergeant Rodriguez is equally respected for her compassion, warm personality, and unwavering commitment to serving others. She has truly been a great asset to Sunnyside and we thank her for her service and wish her all the best in her well-deserved retirement. So, thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna present you with the mayor's coin as well.
Would the rest of council like to come? Mike? Jackie, no?
I got it.
Thank you. Vicki Irving, nice to meet you. Thank you. Yeah, do we have the public comment signup sheets still up there?
There's a-
There's a couple.
In the audience. Yeah.
While they sign up, citizens are advised they must limit their remarks to council for three minutes. Council may refer items to staff to review and/or research for presentation at future items, future meetings.
It was loud. Yeah.
You know, she's trying to log on now.
I pushed it and it didn't log in.
Okay. First up is Diana Gutierrez.
Can we go together?
You wanna go together? Yeah, go for it.
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Gutierrez. I've been a Sunnyside resident for most of my life. I'm here to talk about the introduction of a community garden that could serve as a valuable resource and gathering space for our neighborhood. While we don't have all the details finalized yet, we wanted to start this important conversation with the council and I'm here to introduce Marisela.
Hi everyone, my name is Marisela Santana. I lived in Sunnyside for over 20 years and I'm deeply passionate about supporting more spaces for our community for many generations. And I wanted to go into first with the problem. Our community is facing many challenges, including gay violence, and it's taking advantage of our youth, the lack of free, accessible, and educational opportunities for all ages in our community. Many of the programs are only for certain ages, which divide and exclude multi-generational learning. We have a lack of green spaces, which are really important to promote physical and mental health. And then many of the residents here don't really have spaces to community garden.
Marisela and I are hoping to initiate a community garden for all ages, a place to learn about how to grow a diverse range of fruits, vegetables, and herbs, how to use these foods, and collaborate with the community to share what we grow, fostering community well-being and connection. These spaces are extremely important because they will promote food sovereignty, environmental education, and mental health.
And this is kind of like early stages of this. This is some idea that Diana and I came about. We're still working on this, so we just wanted to initiate this conversation and come back definitely more to talk more about this project and give more information. So we'll be back and give a little bit more details about it. But we just wanted to ask, you know, if the city has any current resources or spaces that could be potentially open for a community garden? Yeah, we would love to hear about that from you all. And also, if you feel you could share our contact information if you have come upon anybody else that's also interested in doing a community garden and you could share that and connect us with them. And that would be it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And that's actually a fabulous idea. Yeah, it's a good idea. So if you can get ahold of our city manager and, you know, hold the meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. I just started giving them. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is consent agenda. Counsel, we did have some changes to the consent agenda. Hopefully everybody got copies and you were able to research it over the weekend. I'm not gonna read it, but- Counsel, do you have any questions or do you want to pull any item for further discussion?
I have nothing to pull at this. No, no.
I have a few questions. Item 111253. It's for the six street improvements. Is that, um, how many more payments are we expected to see on the consent agenda for that? Do we know?
I believe, I believe this is the final payment that's left, yeah, from some of the stuff that was still kind of at the end that they were fixing and things like that.
Okay. And then the next one I have is 111271. Jail commissary. And I know we're doing the commissary different this year, but we wrote out a check for what $1,211.82 to the contractor. What, do we know why?
So we want to switch our commissar. Comes in and handles the commissary. Because the way it is, we've, we're talking with Ben, we think we need to put out a request for proposal. So right now our jail sergeant's working on that. The request for proposal has to be really specific because it has to tie into our current system that accepts money for inmates. And so we have to make sure that when we write that, nobody bids and we don't, we overlook it and approve the bid and it doesn't tie into our system. So we're currently working on putting that bid together. What they're gonna do when they come in, my understanding is they're gonna buy all of our stock that we have purchased, that we're selling, and then they'll just assume the commissary and take care of it and then just cut us a check for the portion that kicks back to us.
Okay, but this, this check to the contractor, I thought, actually, that was the contractor already that's taking over the commissary.
What contractor? I'm sorry.
It's, uh-
Find the check.
Keef.
That's who, that's who we get most of the supplies from.
Oh, okay.
So we buy some stuff from Pepsi, some stuff from, I think, we might pay some to Frito-Lay. I know we get chips, those might be through Keef, but Keef supplies most of the ramen and that kind of stuff. So we don't go to like Safeway and buy it, we buy it bulk through Keef.
Okay, now I got you now. All right, thank you, Chief Lehman. And then Sabo, I think, a few other changes, if you could explain what those changes were?
I can. We did have two credit card statements that were not included in the first check register that was provided and we added those. And then we have the last three checks. Beginning with the check 111310 through 111313 were included in the original check register, but they were listed as an EFT.
Okay.
And so they, they were actually checks that were printed. So the dollar amount did not change. The only amount that changed on the check register was by the two additional, I'm trying to get there, credit card statements that were included. And that is on page two of the check register. And the two that were added are at the bottom. One is for $161.35 and one is for $108.18.
Okay, thank you.
Scroll down just a little bit more, Jackie. Those two right there, those were added.
All righty.
I had a few questions.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Okay, on the January Zoom, there was six charges for $279.88. Is that what it costs a month for Zoom?
That is for each person, there's 13 Zoom licenses that are given to staff members and those are the annual.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought we were being charged.
No.
Got much. Okay. And then another one was, um, seventeen eighty-four. It was, uh, let's see. TJ's HVAC repairs? This is a question to Chief Lehman. Did we ever get a new HVAC system at the police station?
So the police department has, I believe, six or seven systems total. We replaced the ones covering the jail. Um. I'm not. I know water heater repaired. We have a lot of issues in the jail because people will flush towels and, uh, underwear and things like that. So rotor rudders out here probably once a week, it seems like. I just got another rotor rudder billed today, but, um. The water heater and HVAC, I know that we had some issues in the, um, detective building across the parking lot. I'm not a hundred percent sure which portion of the building this was for.
Okay. That explains, yeah.
But we did replace those A C units. I think it was four of them and they were put in with a crane on the jail specifically.
Good.
Yep.
Okay.
Any further questions? Then. Okay, counsel, what is the desire?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Counselor Ripley and a second by Counselor Vazquez to approve the consent agenda. Any debate? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Neopost, no. I also will. Moving on to active agenda. Sunnyside marketing plan, um, Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I really appreciate it. So, um, this is a request for a hundred thousand dollars to really invest in Sunnyside's future. So, um, we're going to do this with the LTAC funds and, and, um, Deputy Mayor, I know you chair that board, so you're intimately familiar with, with some of the reasonings that, that I'm doing this. So I'm looking at Sunnyside. Um, these funds really give us the autonomy to, uh, market the city the way we'd like. Um, to use digital components and, and content create, uh, with much more autonomy, uh, over the years. Uh, we've worked really closely with Yakima Valley Tourism, who does a great job in, in certain senses and, and, um, we'll continue to work with them, uh, not on, uh, as large of scale. Um, but really some modernize our marketing techniques. Um, as many know, I'd, I'd been in marketing and content creation over the years before I got into government, so really familiar with this space. And, uh, just some context, you know, we're looking at Sunnyside to really mark, market the rich, uh, culture, our history. Um, you know, really leverage our, the cultural opportunities here. Uh, we presented that marketing plan to the council, uh, before we presented it to LTAC, so we're back here. So, um, you know, I, I think the plan's been vetted quite a bit by the LTAC committee, by the board. Um, so, uh, really comfortable with where we're at with it and I think I've answered quite a few questions. So if there's any more, would certainly be willing to, uh, to answer those again.
Counsel, any questions?
Are we contracting out any of this work or is it going to be in-house?
So we're going to, we're definitely going to have to contract out. There's no question. Um, uh, while I have the expertise, I don't have the time. You know, I, I, I know how to edit, I know how to shoot video, but it's, you know, having the bandwidth to do it. And so, so we'll explore some of those opportunities to see who's out there, if we are F P it. Um, in some senses, we, we can also do service contracts for, you know, particular types of, of marketing opportunities. So it, we're definitely going to have to go out to the private sector to help us out. Um, and we, and we could do that a couple of ways. You, you can hire a marketing firm to kind of provide you a, a certain amount of content per month, to come up with a content creation plan. Or you can piecemeal it based on the event or based on what in particular you're trying to market. So ju- just a couple of ideas to, to leverage culture. Uh, I really want to create sort of like a taco trail. Um, and I'm stealing this idea a little bit from Kansas City, Missouri. Kansas City has some of, you know, the best Mexican food in all the country. Most people don't realize in the Midwest. Um, so we're going to take some of the ideas out there and try to leverage what we have because I, I think our greatest asset here is our food culture, you know, our ties to ag, the hops industry. Uh, and our Mexican food is some of the best I've, I've tasted. You know, I've lived all across the country and I'll say our, our Mexican food rivals Phoenix. And, um, you know, we just have such a, an awesome variety. So I got to stay out of the restaurants too much. I start gaining weight. Um, so yeah, so I, I think that's definitely an opportunity, um, that we have. I think our events, you know, from the Implement Parade to Cinco de Mayo, to, uh, our, gosh, the L Fest, to even, um, what is it? Sunnyside Days or, uh? Yeah, Sunshine Days, forgive me. Um, so I think we have four really good events there that are marketable. Um, and I think we've got to market those in real time. I mean, you really have three opportunities. You have the, the run-up to the event, the, the event itself and then the follow-up. And, um, and then I think through all this is, it's building our archive and you know, making sure that we can continue to market in-house and really showcase our, our businesses, our, our restaurants, our food, our culture. Uh, we're, we're just in such a unique part of the country when you think about it. We have wineries, we have breweries, uh, we have incredible restaurants and, you know, just a really warm feel about Sunnyside. So I'm, I'm super excited about getting the opportunity to really market on our own accord and, uh, and like I said, Yakima Valley Tourism has been a great partner over the years and we're still going to work with them in some capacity. We spent a tremendous amount of money on magazines and, you know, kind of like the foldouts and all these kind of things. And, you know, sometimes you don't, you can't measure the return on investment with those. Um, while they're a great mantle on the, you know, the coffee table, it's just not measurable and, um, the thing I like about digital and creating our own content, we, we can know where it went, who saw it. Are we getting a return on investment? So that, so those kind of things are measurable. And plus they're tangible too because they're, they're going to live on our platforms, you know, forever. So people can see, oh, wow, that's, you know, that's a spot that, you know, maybe I'd like to hit it. So, um, yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm really excited about it.
Go ahead.
Um, another question. Um, is any of that money going to be used to, um, update our, our current website? Um?
So here's, here's one plan. Here's a thought that I've had, um, is create a, a separate marketing website and, you know, as, as part of a package or, or maybe an individual service to create a Sunnyside Tourism website where all our content goes there. There's a link on our main homepage. But, you know, something very simple like sunnysidetourism.com. I, I haven't really thought about it. And I didn't want to overthink it till you guys approved it, right? So, um, so I wanted to get the okay before I started to put any actual tangible ideas, but so that's one thought that we had.
Counsel, Counsel Foster, were you thinking the, the main city website?
Uh huh.
No, it's.
Oh, well, we, we really, this couldn't be used for that because this has to specifically be used for tourism. Now, we could create a tourism website that was linked back to our main page, but I don't think the intent of this money would be to upgrade our own page. Well, I guess you, you probably could argue from some tourism elements, but the intent of LTAC dollars is not.
Okay.
Hold on, let me see if anybody else, anybody else have any questions?
No, I did, but go for it.
No, no, go, I, I'll. So we'll go.
Yeah, okay. So I see here on number two and number four, the second one is digital marketing and advertising for its video and content creation. In total, combining those two amounts, it's forty thousand. And so I was saying, I was thinking that's a lot just for content creation and pla- you know, and posting and photos. I do see you guys will be looking at hiring professional people to take videos and photos and that's something that we would be outsourcing, correct?
Abs- absolutely. You know, I, I would probably do a little bit, you know, once, once the website was up and running. Um, you know, that my bandwidth right now is pictures, you know, I'm pretty good at, um, shooting a few pictures and then, you know, writing kind of a story within my social media platforms. But yeah, these would be specific videos that would come in and, and, you know, to give an example, let's say, uh, I don't know, Snipes, for example, you, you know, we're going to do a little one-minute, thirty-second video on Snipes and all it has. So we, we would hire that company to come in, you know, shoot some of the, the marquee food, you know, talk to a few customers, get it out there, probably in multiple forms. You know, you, you, you don't want to do just one. You might do three plates and then, you know, you're pushing it out and, uh, we're sharing that on our, um, our separate platforms that we create for Sunnyside Tourism and then also our main platforms. You know, so we're getting the bang for the buck, but.
Okay, so it sounds like we would be providing those photos or videos for these businesses?
You, you know, I, I mean, I'm always open to sharing, you know, we would own the content, but, but I think in good spirit. I know when I was, um, you know, producing television shows back in the day and, I mean, I would always share the content as, you, you know, ultimately we'll be the owners of it and it only helps us, right, as a city? So I, I think, um, I think that's okay. It's just, you know, as long as they're not selling it and, you know, and using the content for their own. So yeah, I'm, I'm really open to, and I, I've always found that fosters better relationships when, because if you get too stingy with your content, then it, it just feels like, oh, you know, we're trying to leverage it for our own. Because ultimately it's going to help the restaurant, it's going to help the city, it's going to help with sales tax and all these good things. So, uh, I'm excited about showcasing, you know, a lot of our assets because my opinion is Sunnyside has not been showcased for all the incredible things that we have here. Um, so from that perspective, like, I'm really excited about it.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Didn't want to be forgotten. Hand up. So it does say that we are allocating fifteen thousand dollars for web development? But you're saying that's still not going to be our main website. It's going to be a separate website.
It, it will have to be a separate website because the LTAC dollars can only be used for, um, a certain purpose, which is tourism. So I don't think, I think if we went ahead and, and Debbie can, can attest to, if, if the auditor came in and we spent fifteen thousand to update our main website and kind of explaining like, hey, we did it for tourism. Uh, you know, it may not pass a snip test.
Well, I, okay, well, um, I don't know if this is maybe a recommendation. I mean, the, the first thing that comes up when we look, when I Google city of Sunnyside and you open up the city website.
Those videos, yeah.
Is the Sunnyside Video Tour. And this is Dean Borzmar, our, our current mayor, um, welcoming people to our hometown and giving some insight and some data, but it's only in English. So when we talk about development or when we're continuing to talk about, um, tourism and getting people into Sunnyside and showcasing our talents, if that's business or if that's events, um, um, I, I, and, and we're, and we're allocating some funds to this, I think I would highly encourage us. Um, especially now since it seems like interpreting services has been out of the budget to, um, to, to translate as much of this information as, as we, as we can. Um, can, if, when we have where we're living in a community where seventy percent of our population are monolingual speakers and majority of them speaking Spanish only, and we're trying to attract more, more folks in, into Sunnyside. And, and we're actually, even our neighboring towns are, uh, majority Latino-speaking, uh, Spanish speakers. Um, it, it would definitely be something to, to consider as we're, um, uh, developing and updating our, our services. If that's the Sunnyside Video Tour, for example, which I would think would, would bring in tourism. I'm seeing the Sunnyside Swimming Pool, which we're going to have open now. Um, uh, in, in some neighborhoods, I'm seeing some downtown video. Um, I.
I think, I think you could definitely make the argument and I'm, I'm always willing to push the envelope and, you know, I'd, I'd want to run it through our legal team to, to see what they thought and but yeah, I, and, and here's the thing, I've been doing a little bit of homework on, on web development and I asked this question to a web developer about translating to Spanish and the new A I components of website design make it, the translations, um, much more accurate than they used to be back in the day. Remember like Babbel Fish or something like that? It, it, it never quite got the, I remember, uh, with some websites designed that I was, was involved in. It was like this button and you'd push it and it would translate and it would get a lot of the words wrong. But the new, the new A I technology is much better. So the, the suggestion I got was, you know, you, use these A I components, uh, for the translation because they're much more accurate. And, you know, think about, you know, the audience, because, because I'm very conscious of that too, because here in Sunnyside, we have a lot of Spanish speakers only. And, um, you know, our audience that we're trying to attract is outside the, our D M A, which may not, is probably not as highly prevalent like in terms of Spanish speaking. Because, uh, I asked the question of why don't we just, can we create a whole different thing in Spanish, like the same content in Spanish? Cost-effective wise, it's, it's better to put the, the A I translator. You know, and I'm not a web designer, so I, Jafet could probably, you know, I feel a little foolish. The, you know, I don't, I don't know quite how to articulate how, how they put the A I translation tool within the website, but, but I'm being told your best bet, most cost-effective is to incorporate this A I tool. And translations are, are much cleaner and much more accurate these days. Um, so that, I mean, that's one thought, you know, just make sure the button is prevalent so our Spanish speakers know, you know, can identify that right away.
Just translate the website.
Ex- exactly.
Ability to translate the website. Would there also be like subtitles? I mean, even when we're, I, I, I've seen some, some, uh, Inatai just, you know, um, uploaded their, their video. Um, uh, remind me what the title was. It was power building and, and.
Community.
Come.
Power building.
Yeah, Irving was, was at that conference over in Pasco and so was Maria Fernandez. And, and, and so they're sho- showcasing different organizations from just central and eastern Washington. And even though it's primarily in Spanish, the subtitles, they did a phenomenal job.
I think we could.
Subtling it in, in, in English. It was, did I say English or did I say Spanish?
Spanish.
Yeah, meto nortando. Okay, English. Uh, there were subtitles in, in Spanish. So even.
We could do either or. You know, these days with technology, the technology has, I mean, in the last five years, honestly, with, with the A I components and how they're mixing, how they're being utilized with, with video content creation, it's even light years ahead of where it was five years ago. Um, so I have, I have no doubts. If, if that's part of, if that's part of the package, we just make, we have to just make sure that we build that in with the content creator to say, you know, we need subtitles. You know, if, if we're going to have content in Spanish, we want to have it in English and vice versa. Uh, if we have content in English, have Spanish subtitles. So I, I don't, I'm confident that's not going to be an issue. But, but certainly like the written word will be pretty simple to translate and, and quite accurately these days because of the A I translation tools. Because that's something I've been thinking about is, you know, how do we reach? Because I want to reach our audience too here and, and Sunnyside because what I've found over the years, you, you, you create content and people have pride, they share it in the community. Hey, we're getting dap, you know, they're recognizing us. So to me, that is relationship building internally in the city. Because when we're recognizing, you know, how special a business or a restaurant or a person, you know, that, that means a lot. And that gets shared around and, and there's no boundaries on social media or the internet. It goes all across the world. So, you know, I look at it as, it's this infinite space that we're sharing with the world.
I'm just a big supporter and proponent of, of language access. I think language access will definitely get you to community building and I think that's what we want to get.
Absolutely.
And, um, and, um, even, you know, throughout the Yakima Valley, I think one of, you know, the, one, one of the main languages is, is Spanish. And I know we're trying to get people in from, from all backgrounds and experiences and, and I recognize and I, and I acknowledge that. But I think um, we definitely have to, for me, uh, removing interpreting services out of a budget was a step backwards. Um, I definitely think that's a conversation to revisit. Um, um, we're, we're trying to also celebrate um, uh, people in, in our community, like you just said, make sure that we're getting more people involved in our community. Um, uh, continuing the community building within Sunnyside. Um, and so, um, in Sunnyside or across the Lower Yakima Valley or across the region. Um, I think language access should definitely be a, a center of a conversation once again, and especially if we're going in and, and talking about marketing and expanding on our marketing for tourism purposes.
I agree. And I, and I'll just make sure that that is part of the equation. Because this, sometimes it is easy to forget, you know, I'll throw a print release out there and I go, oh, gosh, I got to translate it or, you know, so it just, to me, I've found it has to be at top of mind and, um, just making sure that we're really conscious.
Yeah, and even, sorry, Mike, not to interrupt you, I'm sorry. Um, but, um, even during, um, last Wednesday when we had, um, the animal, uh, control conversation, um, there was actually a foster, um, an animal foster, uh, a community resident in, in the room and, and they actually needed translation or interpreting services and, and, and there was. and, and they actually needed translation or interpreting services and, and there wasn't that, and this person is fostering many, many, many animals in the community. So, um, and I know we're having one again and we're having some of these community forums again, so. Just, uh, you know, it's just something to keep on our radar.
Um, and just to give you guys a little bit of background since I'm the chair of LTAC. So in, in the last couple of years, we, we have been spending LTAC money and we've been, um, you know, giving it to Yakima Valley Tourism, anywhere between fifty thousand to sixty, seventy, you know, eighty thousand. And LTAC members committee, uh, they just felt that that money wasn't being well spent, Sunnyside wasn't being front and center. Um, so they had other cities that they were kind of concentrating a little bit more. Um, so we saw, we saw that we could, you know, maybe change it up and, and, and have our city manager be the one kind of in charge of this money. And, you know, like his plan says right there, you know, he's still going to be working with, with Yakima Valley Tourism to an extent and then, you know, with other people, you know, uh, local, local, um, businesses hopefully. And we could bring Sunnyside to the front center and, and kind of concentrate on just Sunnyside tourism, not the rest of the cities around us, but just bringing the people here in Sunnyside. So that's just a little bit of background. Any questions? Go ahead, Counselors.
Wanted to add something, so going back to just the forty thousand, right? That's like a lot of money for content creation and it, and it's not a lot, especially for outsourcing people, which is good, but I really do want this money to be seen into our community. A lot of community members oftentimes will say, I didn't know, I didn't know the parade route, right? For the implemented parade or I didn't know the time and I didn't know where, where it's best to park or X, Y and Z, right? So I really want, if we're going to be doing this now in, inside of Sunnyside and you being in charge, for it to be something that can actually be seen and for everyone to say, you know what, I noticed a change or this year everything was very easy, everything was very, just, it kept showing up on my Facebook, Instagram. I see TikTok here, right? Nowadays, even our youth, they use TikTok now, so let's use it and let's use it to benefit our community. So especially if we're now in charge, I do, and with all this money being allocated, I am excited to see the new changes and the updates, so. And for it to go well, that way, the year coming, we're able to approve this and have good feedback regarding how the money was spent correctly.
Absolutely, um, you know, I, I know the pressure's on when, you know, the stakes are high, when you're allocated this much, but I, but I also feel I'll deliver. I mean, I, I know I've, I've built, um, my Hispanic Food Network brand, we've got fifty thousand followers. Um, so I, you know, I know it resonates and I think I understand this community too, you know, having worked, uh, a Latino cooking show for many, so we did like forty shows. I mean, it was pretty incredible, so I've, I've been all across Washington State, was, was in Sunnyside fifteen years ago. So I kind of understand that space, you know, and, and some of the marketing elements, so I, I'm, I think just the foodie in me is most excited to market our food elements and then, you know, all the other things that come with Sunnyside as well. Um, so I think people are going to notice and they're going to start going, wow, that, that's pretty neat. All the, all the things that we have going on, so I'm super excited.
Counsel, what, uh, what is your desire?
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Frosto and a second by Counselor Ripley to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to spend one hundred thousand in lodging tax funds to implement a marketing plan and enter into any, any necessary agreements. Is there any debate? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. I also vote aye, motion passes. Okay, city council meetings, um, there's a discussion that's gonna, we're gonna take place, so Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor and, and this is something that, uh, I talked with my staff at the, our Monday staff meeting and, you know, I was sensing a little fatigue, um, with the pace of four meetings a month and, you know, I'm also sensing fatigue amongst, um, the council too, because I, we're going four times a month, we're having long meetings. And, you know, what I'm realizing is we don't have the staff of Pasco, you know, at, or Franklin County. When I, when I was at both those entities, sometimes you get spoiled and you, you don't realize how much help you have. We're, we're, I, I know we get dinged by the public sometimes, oh, you guys, you got so much staff. We, we really run very, very lean at, at the city of Sunnyside and I'm proud of what, what the folks do here. And, um, you know, I think it would allow staff a little bit of a breather to go every other Monday rather than four Mondays, because it's a lot, you know, it's, and it's a lot for this group. If, if everyone had an assistant and an assistant to the assistant, it would be much easier. Um, so, so really I wanted to present this idea to, to see what the council thought. We even kicked around the idea of maybe doing one, uh, study session per month and then two regular meetings or do we go back to the study sessions before the meetings and we just have two longer ones and, but we're, the, the one that seemed to, to win the, the unofficial poll seemed in my mind was uh, the study sessions before the meetings, even though those get abbreviated, at least you guys get, get some time to talk about, you know, some, some of what's coming up in the meeting, but I think that would free up time for, for you guys as well, because you have your regular lives. And every Monday's a lot and I, and I realize that and I, I know you guys have, have been great about it. But, you know, this is really me kind of evaluating staff and saying, you know what, let's, let's give them an opportunity to get the work done because what winds up happening and God bless Jackie, she, you know, she's constantly in like meeting creating mode, you know, so I, I need to give her a break too, so. And she's been, she's been wonderful, obviously. So, uh, that's kind of what, that's kind of the question on the floor and, and looking for some direction. But I wanted to get counsel's feeling, because ultimately we'll have to, i- if we decide to go in a different direction, you'll have to undo the ordinance and redo the ordinance and all those kind of things. So I wanted to hear from, from you guys and, and kind of give us some feedback of how you're feeling.
Counsel?
Yeah, so from the start, we started doing it three Mondays a month, correct? It was one workshop Monday and then two regular meetings? And then we changed it to two Mondays a month, right? And then we would do like the study session right before, I'm just trying to go back to.
I think we jumped right into, to four a month, if I remember correctly.
Well, we had it at.
Oh, that was before my time, okay, got you.
That was, that was before.
And then we switched to two and then we switched to all Mondays. So I didn't, I didn't, to be honest, from the four Mondays from going to three to two to four, I did feel the shift. It was drastic at first, but now I just have booked off all my Mondays. But, you know, going back to even having everyone else in mind, maybe we could go with, I don't know, three and get a feeling for that and see how that goes and then maybe go back to two. Just because personally I like one day solely focused on just focusing on what are we going to do, what can we do and not feeling so rushed? Because I also have to admit that with the two Mondays, we would constantly be rushed, rushed, rushed personally. And we didn't really get time to really talk everything through and go back and forth. So that's something where the pressure was always there before we would switch to regular meetings. And then that's my opinion.
So basically we'd meet, um, the way that you're putting, we'd meet three times instead of four times.
If we wind up doing one, and this was popular amongst the staff that are coming, is maybe eliminate one of the meetings and just make one a study session early in the month and then two regular meetings or you could go regular meetings and, um, and then a work-study session and then a regular meeting, so it, I mean, it's flexible in that regard. But if you wanted to eliminate one meeting, I think that would be helpful for staff too. And, and maybe just the final Monday is an, an off day, you know, is, is a day that we don't meet. So that, that's, you know, there, there's no one right way, I guess you could say, it's just really what, what ultimately we decide and what, what the council decides.
On the study sessions, before the meeting, yeah, we didn't get to all of it. And that was aggravating because then, you know, we didn't
Right.
know about it, but, uh, having it, you know, the study session the first Monday, then you kind of lost what was going on for the meetings. And, um, that's just kind of, but just take better notes, I guess.
Yeah, and that's some feedback that we did get by the time the, you know, to vote on the workshop from the prior Monday, you're like, oh gosh, what did, what did we, uh, discuss? So yeah, I mean, that's another kind of argument against that.
I do like having it two times a month, but three times wasn't bad either. But four times, yeah, a little bit much.
Four times gets a lot, so.
Well, maybe we could do, I really like the two times a month. I think it gives us all a lot of breathing space and, um, you know, I know there's business owners amongst us. I mean, there's families, there's just our own lives and work and whatnot and, um, and so, so if we could go back to the two and just be more intentional about how we draft and create and create our, our agendas, I think what was happening too the other time around was when we were packing the, the sessions and so we were not getting to every item come the agenda, come the actual. So maybe just being more intentional about how many items we put before every.
Yeah, I, I could agree to that because I remember one time we got to like JK and, you know, through the halfway through the alphabet and that was very tough.
So what I'm hearing is two Mondays out of the month, they have a, uh, a study session at the beginning like we used to have?
Yes.
Like an hour study session and then have the regular, and then have the regular meeting?
How many items we put on the, on the study session?
Be conscious of what we say during the study sessions. Sometimes it seemed like things were just, uh, brought over and over, you know, said over and over again. And that bothered me, I just wanted to cut it off and.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could, I could definitely go for that, going back to the two and then having the, the study session before the, the regular council meeting.
Okay, sounds good and, and I know the staff would appreciate that. And that, that'll give us time to better prepare a, a more thorough agenda, I guess you could say.
Yeah.
Because I, I've, I've been accused of being very optimistic of what we can get through on a large agenda.
Me to Z.
Yeah, so, so that, that'll give us time to really, I think, if we can deal with some things offline and, you know, it, it, they'll, it'll, I think it'll make things more concise and it'll give me a chance to better, you know, manage the agendas as well. Um, because you know, in, in my position, I get pulled in a lot of directions. So sometimes you're like, oh, the agenda, let me, let me check it out and, um, you know, we have a competent staff, so. So it's nice to have that, but at the same time, you know, I think if I had an assistant to the assistant to the assistant, which I know some colleagues that, that are city managers, they have an assistant, they have a deputy, they have an assistant and then the assistant has an assistant. And I'm like, what do y'all do all day, you know? I mean, I don't have an executive assistant myself right now, so. But, you know, we're a small town and I get it, we, you know, we work hard. So anyway, that, so what I'm hearing, a couple of times a month with a study session before.
Jackie, can, can you remind us what time we were starting for the?
The, when we were doing it like that, we were starting at five thirty was the workshop or study session and then six thirty, I just want to make sure if you're doing it that way, we're creating four agendas, so.
Oh, because the work, the, the study session is a separate agenda.
That'd be creating four agendas a month, so for me, it would change and be the same. But it's not about me.
How were you handling it? Were you able to do it, the two agendas that week?
It's tough because you're just, it's duplicate, you're just making it the same. Um, when I, when and if I get the deputy city clerk, they'll be able to help. Um, but I think we were experiencing a lot of repeat information where if it was in the study session, we would just put it onto the consent agenda and it would be faster.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's totally up to whatever the council decides.
It kind of begs the question, do, do we need a study session? Can we talk about things and, I mean, I think the onus would be put on us to, you know, try to educate you guys offline before we get here and, and then that way, maybe we can answer some of the questions offline and, because I, I did notice there was redundancy when we'd, we'd have the study session and I'll, I'll be honest, like some of the feedback I got from the public was, you guys, you guys discuss the meat and then we show up and you guys vote on it, you know? So I, I, sometimes when you're in the weeds, you don't, you don't realize the optics of it. Because people, it's tough for them to get off work at five and then get here for the study session and the counter argument is, well, just listen to it on YouTube, but I know when I walk in the house and Cody starts barking and my son runs up and my wife goes, take the garbage out and, you know, do some chores and I'm like, uh, I, I don't have time to listen to YouTube. So I, I get that, the, the pushback from the public. It, you know, it seems like, why did you guys have a study session when we weren't here? And then you vote on something.
We don't talk.
Right, and it just.
Kind of clueless.
Yeah, so, I mean, it really kind of, to me, it just, it goes, why don't we just discuss it at six, like a regular meeting and if there's issues? Because here's the thing, I mean, government doesn't need to move quickly, we, i- if we're not making, if we, if we're not in a position to make a decision that night, then we go, look, well, let's, let's discuss it at our next meeting. That to me, like optically, and I think transparently would be the best. Because that's some of the early feedback I got when, when I first jumped on board was like, hey, you know, you, I walk in and you guys are making decisions and we go, oh, you missed the study session. Well, it started at five, you know, well, I've been working since five, you know? That would be, that, that would be my advice, just kind of looking uh, from the outside in.
Two meetings with no study session?
Yeah, to me, it's, you know, like, like just from a trans, and this is my opinion, uh, you know, from a transparency point of view, um, because I've covered many councils over the years as a journalist and I would say, you know, the optics to me, it, it would be like, why don't you just discuss this while the, the regular meeting's happening? Because you have the public here, you know, they, they can interject. Because what it looked like, and it wasn't the intent, the intent was really just to speed things up. It's when you bring before an agenda item and you rubber stamp it and everybody's in the crowd going, wait a minute, I, I came for the, the agenda item and it's over, you know, we already discussed it while you were coming home from work. That's, that's, you know, that, that becomes the optics of it and the logic, logical person in me goes, why are we having a study session? Let's just do the meeting and if we, if we just, if we're discussing it and we can't make a decision and it needs more work, you tell staff, you know, do more work on it and then.
So if, if we do decide, uh, to do the two, two meetings, what are the odds that our agenda gets published Wednesday? And not Friday, because that's going to give us more time to, to prep and to study, because we're not going to have a study session, so.
Right.
And I do, I, I do my study session on Saturday morning, right, when.
Yeah, and I think, um, I think without the extra meeting, because, you know, I'll, I'll defend the staff here, you know, and I put them in that position where we're turning out meetings, so.
Yeah, no, and, and I understand the way it is right now, where we have meeting after meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could go to Friday, but now that we only have two, then they kind of have a little bit.
Yeah, no, I think with that buffer,
Yeah.
you know, we shouldn't have many excuses to say, ah, we didn't have time, so. It's just a matter of us really allocating the time and sort of the back timing of it and, and making sure that we're working ahead and, you know, there shouldn't be, you know, there shouldn't be excuses. I mean, there'll be, sometimes we won't be able to hit the mark, but, um, I would think by Thursday, the latest we should be able to get it out.
Okay.
So you guys are, so with the sounds like two regular meetings without a study session? So then if it's that way, could we do three where we have like a workshop or a study session prior to the two? Well, because I think it's really important for us to also have a, a time where we're not taking action and where we can dialogue and go back and forth and just prepare some more, personally.
Well, I mean, it's like today, it's a, it's a regular study session and we're kind of having a, well, I mean, it's a regular, it's a regular council meeting, but we're having a, a discussion.
Right, exactly, you know, and that's, and, and I've seen them both ways. I, I've seen jurisdictions that don't have study sessions, they use the, the meeting as, as the forum to discuss things. But to Counselor Vasquez's point, there is no harm in having that study session, because it does give you a chance to breathe. It's just really a matter of, you know, how, how do you guys feel about it? And, because we'll, we'll turn, we'll do whatever is a desire of, of council. And if the body feels like that study session is a good idea. I mean, I'm a proponent of four meetings a month, you know, I, I don't mind it. But, you know, it, it put, it does put a burden on staff. And the, the fact that we don't have a huge staff, it's, every department. And the, the fact that we don't have a huge staff, it's, every department is basically the department of one. And, you know, it's, it's really.
Or what if we would do instead of like the two without a study session? What if we do one Monday with a study session and then the other Monday without, would that work?
I, I mean, I think that could work. I mean, that, because you could flow right into the meeting. I mean, that's, that's no problem.
But that Monday that we don't have studies, we'd start it at six thirty, just to keep it, I guess, the same. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of.
Well, here's the thing, this is what I think, here's two, this is two things. I think if, if we're, we're going to have an act, an agenda item, it's always listed as discussion. So if we know we're going to go into an item and we're going to discuss and we're not going to take any action on it, then we know that we're going to probably need a little bit extra room to discuss that item. So then maybe we limit from ten items to five items. Um, and then a part two of this is, um, if we keep it at two and we don't, and we try it without a work session. What we've also been doing along the way is we've been meeting four times a week. And sometimes you've been calling for an extra meeting every now and then. So sometimes it's five meetings. We still have the, the ability, and I say this with a lot of love.
No, I know.
Yeah.
I didn't take it that way.
So we still have the, there's still the possibility of calling a special meeting if we need to or calling a, you know, a one-off meeting whenever we really feel like we have to come in and, and do that third meeting. Is.
I think that you, um, Deputy Mayor, I would like our new, um, HR manager to weigh in this. He was a city councilman and he's a very process oriented person. And I would like your opinion, Urban, on, on what your thoughts are, you know, as you digest this, this particular discussion.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Um, Deputy Mayor, City Council, um, thank you. Um, the briefest conversation that we were having just in my, what I call my organized mind. Consistency is, is hugely important to not confuse our constituents as well. Where I'm at is if we're going to have three meetings, what I did propose is that if we had a workshop, then we had two regular meetings. I think we would get a lot of, out of that, but keep it consistent as far as the time is concerned. Not a fan of a workshop at five and then going right into a regular meeting. I find that to be, um, not fully inclusive. Because the opportunities of childcare, coming from work, really trying to do a data download, switch from one meeting to the next to even try to understand it when a lot of our constituents are, are trying to figure out what we are doing to run the city. So I, I, you know, I'm a big proponent of if we reduce it to the, to the two. Um, and then, you know, workshop, meeting, meeting. And if it goes down to two, um, that would be possibly eliminating the workshop and having two meetings. So what would I like to see? The workshop and let's have a conversation and be fully inviting to our community. And then take that back and process all of that and let that create your agenda.
Council?
I think that if we do that, that we stick with the six P M.
Yes.
Time on all of, yeah.
All the meetings.
And FYI, our meetings are still being listed at six thirty P M versus six P M on the website.
Okay.
So thank you.
No, that.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
But he made that sound pretty simple. Thank you. That's why I asked. He made it sound very simple in the meeting this morning. So thank you.
Can you make a comment on the?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Abel.
The, um, when the agenda packet is issued. So one of the, the, you know, primary functions for having the regular council meetings is to approve the claims. And when we are now having council approve the claims before we pay them, we do need to have that time to, we have a lot of claims. And so they all have to, you know, be sent to all the department directors and reviewed and entered and then put into the, the check register. So, you know, the, the more time staff has to be able to process those claims, the less likely we are to have claims, um, that are going to have late fees. Because we, we weren't able to process them in a timely manner to get the, the agenda packet out sooner.
Gotcha. Okay. So council, uh, it sounds like we want to try the three study session and then the, the two council meetings. Like Mr. Brown said. I'm good with that. All right.
Take you in the middle, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah.
And is it the first Monday is the study session, the second and fourth is the regular? Or do you want it the second and the third Monday?
I think the fourth, so we have a break in between there.
Okay. And then do you want to switch it to study session? It's currently study session. Do you want to change it back to workshop? Like the name, the title of the meeting?
Study session.
Yeah, study sessions, finally.
So we'll prepare the materials to be presented at your next meeting for action?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie. Uh, let's continue to item C, animal control, community forum debrief. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So on the nineteenth, we had a really good meeting on animal control and several council members attended and had a really, really interesting discussion. Learned a tremendous amount, um, you know, and, and I think one of the, the devastating things I learned is that Yakima County and our area is, is really a dumping ground for abandoned dogs. And, you know, we really have a crisis on our hand. So I, I'd like to toss it to the counselors that were there and, and I know Counselor Frost was there. And to really get your guys' perception of the meeting, I, I mean, I thought it was a great meeting. In terms of the stakeholders that showed up and were really present and everybody kind of poured out their heart. And, and, um, you know, I'll leave it at this, you know, I was so impressed by just the love and commitment that these volunteers have for, um, their animals. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a heart wrenching situation that, that, you know, we're, we're definitely committed to start the conversation. So I felt good that we started the conversation and where we go from here, I guess is up to us. So.
Okay. Who wants to start?
Oh, talking about the forum?
Yeah. Um, well, if, if you let me, can I say something for a little bit? So I know I wasn't here at the forum. I was at home coffee in a way, drinking our medicine. And I was able to hear the whole conversation. Uh, all my kids were listening to and, and getting involved. So, um, it was definitely a great forum. It was well attended. There's a lot of organizations I didn't even know about, uh, existed. That we definitely, definitely, uh, are in the right direction, um, to, to be able to do something for, for the animals. And, and, um, we'll have a, a discussion too, you know, um, a little bit later after our councils. Uh, if you want to say something?
I thought it was a really good meeting. It was, it, it brought forth all the rescues and what troubles they're having. You know, the animal control has their own problems trying to take care of the animals. And, uh, which my mind switched to. When we did the chickens, have three chickens, pay twenty-five dollars to have three chickens. I asked, well, what about the roosters? I now have a rooster in my yard. He gets up on my roof and crows every day. I've sicked my dog on that rooster. I've called animal control and I asked him, what do you plan on doing with it? And he says, I've never went after a rooster before. So I now have a, a trap, a humane trap for this rooster. I'm trying to help the animal control. But it, it was, okay, off on, off of that subject. But, uh, those roosters, it's a fighting rooster too. My dog won't even go after it. Or my cats, my five cats. But anyway, um, back to the animal. It was, it was a, it was good to see where the rescues are coming from. And there aren't enough fosters out there for the rescues. There's, there's always different problems for each entity. And, uh, a lot of people have called me about the cats. Is there a T N R, you know, a trap, um, trap neuter and rescue? Wait, no. Trap neuter and release. That's where they, you know, they, there are people out there that do that. I don't think it's one certain company that does it. It's just people who go out there and do it. And they're a rescue and they get reduced rates on, on these cats. They're usually feral cats and we have a feral cat problem in Sunnyside too. It's not just the dogs. The dogs are usually people's dogs who let them out. But I do like the idea of, um, doing a law where you can't breed the dogs. You know, that's a step forward. That's a way to, um, hopefully stop the breeding.
And that's definitely, uh, the way that we're going with item D. So we're going to have a discussion about, um, an ordinance that I'm proposing.
Yeah. May I add something?
Yeah, go ahead.
And I, I think for, for, for the record, we, we also talked about the importance of, of marketing. So we were talking about marketing today. Um, so on that same topic, formulating some sort of campaign, some sort of education and information campaign about, um, our ordinances. If we vote on any ordinances in, in, in the future, if we amend any ordinances around animal control, if there's any new regulations or policies that, that, that come out of council around animal control, to make sure that our residents are in the know, um, to also make sure that these, um, that this marketing campaign or this campaign around animal control is also translated. So, you know, we're more inclusive and it, the outreach, um, is definitely a lot more expansive and effective. And, and, and also I think what's really, really important is that from policy or from conversation or from ordinances, um, the, you know, what, what the key to this is enforcement. Because if we're out here creating or amending ordinances and our code enforcers are not out there being able to do their job because of lack of resources, training, et cetera, you name it. We're not going to get anywhere. So I think enforcement, that's another thing that we talked about is enforcing, enforcing, enforcing. Um, and informing, um, uh, within, within our, within city limits. And I mean, there's so many people out there, um, nonprofits, um, animal rescues from, did we Chinook Pass? Was there someone from Chinook Pass? And then, um, Tri-Cities? I mean, they're, they're everywhere and, and they all recognize that we just have a dire need for animal control in the Yakima County. It's, 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 it's really bad. But we can, we can definitely curb it, um, with intentionality and, and a plan moving forward.
Definitely. And something else just to share regarding this event, something that I, I keep hearing and heard that day was how all these nonprofits and organizations, oftentimes they come from Tri-Cities or the Yakima area. And they all come together because Sunnyside doesn't have a lot of resources and doesn't have a lot of help. So all these organizations come together and they come and help our community. And what I kept hearing was that they would really, really appreciate anything or something that could be some sort of like a holding space for these animals. And they were even sharing how it's not even, if you get organizations and people to come together, it doesn't even cost a lot. So that's something that's been in my mind and how we can get together. There's a lot of animal lovers, truly, really, there is a lot of animal lovers who if we create some sort of event where we do something to give money or donate, so we can do something to create a, a type of space like this for our community. That way these animals have a place to go while they're being searched for a place to be fostered or taken into or adoption or someone who needs a dog. And I also think something regarding back to educating our community, what, what Counselor Frost said is very important. And even creating events where we can educate our community members and let them know, hey, owning, getting a dog, getting a cat isn't just the cute photos and when they're puppies type of situation. It's a full-time commitment. Yes, it's going to be money. You're going to have to buy food. You're going to have to take them to the vet. Sometimes they get sick and you need that extra money to go take them and you're going to spend a thousand, two thousand. And I know from experience, because I am, I love dogs and I had a dog for about ten years and then I didn't, right? But, um, it's very important to educate because a lot of times what I've also seen in our community is they're given as a Christmas present or as a birthday present. And they don't have the responsibility or they don't realize the commitment that it is to have a pet. And three years go by, four years go by, they can't afford the food or they don't see that it's worth it. And they abandon them and dump them. So I think it's also going back to just educating community members and maybe even creating a list, like you need to take them to get vaccines. You're going to have to commit to buying food. You're going to have to get them registered at the city of Sunnyside, you know, and tying it together hand in hand. And that's something that's very important, especially because we have a lot of kids. Our population, our average population in Sunnyside is actually around twenty-seven, twenty-eight, mid thirties. If you guys didn't know, and these, these people are now becoming parents, are now having kids. So it's very important for us to help educate that and share that message.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Counselor.
They have vaccine, um, it was the Humane Society who had a vaccine, um, down here at one point. And that place was packed. If we could get more of, of the Humane Society to come. I'm not sure if they were the ones who, who brought that up.
When we had an animal control officer that was part of the Humane Society, she organized that. We no longer have that contract. So I'm not sure. We have a contract to house there, but we don't have a contract for an animal control officer. So I'm not sure.
To know if they're doing that, because they would go to each city that they had a contract.
Right.
Would hold a one day.
And, and they don't have contracts with any city anymore. They got out of that business. So I'm not sure.
Okay. And they also were doing the, and. T N R, yes, and with the cats.
Okay.
Okay. Definitely a lot of great points, a lot of great ideas. And maybe some of these organizations that showed up for the forum could do some sort of event like that. I mean, definitely something to discuss it a bit further. Anything else, uh, any counselors want to add for item C before we move on to item D?
Transition into D.
Okay. So dog breeding ordinance, item D. I had been working on this ordinance for the past five months. I had it in my file. I never bought it out. Got busy with budget stuff, got busy with everything else. But now I think it's, it's, it's time we, we, we start talking, we start having those discussions, um, about, you know, banning the, the breeding of, of animals, right? Of dogs. A lot of people do it for a quick buck. I know a lot of people, you know, breed my dogs and make a quick buck and they can't sell it. And what do they do to the dogs? They either throw them away, give them away for free. And those people that receive them for free have no idea what they're getting themselves into until they get a big dog and now they don't want it. Now it's too expensive. Another thing is the ordinance that I have presented, I, it's just the draft. So I kind of like the ideas that Derek brought up on the weekly manager report. And I think if we're able to, I don't know, kind of mix, mix them together. You know, your ideas, council, council's ideas, anything that council wants to add. Definitely, you know, we, we need to act now that we had this forum. Um, many times we start discussions and they go nowhere and no action happens. So, uh, I want to let Derek, uh, you know, if he has something to say, wants something to say before council has any questions?
This is, he, he saved me some time because I was actually in the process of getting things together. And I've already, I, in some ways I want to go harsher. And, uh, but there are some things that I think that we would need to make allowances for. First of all, a flat out 100% ban might be an overreach. However, requiring a license or a permit so that these people are vetted. That's one thing that I would change. I would also clarify that each violation, each pup is a violation. Under code enforcement, if I go out onto your property and you've got six cars and you're only allowed to have one, each of those cars is considered a violation, not the fact you have five, but each individual car. So in this case, I believe, and I'm sure our legal folks will correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe we can do it that way. So a litter of nine pups is going to cost you nine thousand dollars. If you don't have your license. Now we have to think about this because sometimes accidents happen.
A lot.
And I mean legitimately, a dog gets out normally. I mean, I've had this dog for years. It's the only time it ever happened. But a solution to that is, oh, spayed and neutered. If my dog spayed and it gets loose, I don't need to really worry about it getting pregnant because, well, it ain't going to happen. So those are some things that I, I. Um so those are some things that I I um I think tweaks. I can't remember what else I had in there, I don't know if I covered everything. But but we, you know, going to uh what Councilmember Frosto said, you know, enforcement is key. And that said, we do these things, we start enforcing, guess who's gonna hear it? I'll hear it, but that's my job. You know, so there'll be pushback and and you know, we have to have the rules in place and we have to have the enforcement, but we also have to be consistent and 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 show that um that that we're serious um about this. And cuz yeah, I was not happy to find out that I'm, that for some reason this area like is a dumping ground. Um and not just for internally to the county, I mean, like people from other counties come to drop their thing. It's just an odd label to have. Um and why would you do that? I don't understand, but anyways, off topic. Um so I I wanna work with um Deputy Mayor Gavin and and get this in place. I'd like to have it. I also, I don't think this needs to go to the planning commission by law, but it's something that you may wanna consider, hold in a public hearing or something like that with regard to it before you do action on it, but that's totally up to, I believe that it's up to you because of where it's placed in the code.
Okay, Council, any questions?
Start off by dog licenses.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Uh maybe to um our department, Mr. Riley and um anything, Irving, you you, I didn't know you were a former council member. Oh, okay. Um what what's what's y'all's experience with with full-on banning breeding? Or have you, I don't know if y'all had any ordinances over Pasco? Um or if any municipalities have full-on banned breeding versus issuing um require or restrictions like um uh through licenses, requiring them to have licenses and then fining them if they don't, correct?
Licensing is always allowed.
Okay.
But plus by ordinance, going forward.
Can you use that?
Sorry. Licensing is always allowed, and if you don't propose that by ordinance, you can. You have to meet the standards of the Washington State of Washington um for licensing uh and applications for that. So there's a strict vetting guideline that's provided by the State of Washington for this, for licensing. So if that's the option you wanna take, you can. An all-out ban, you have to demonstrate a public necess- necessity for that. So it'd be a public nuisance demonstration of this.
We have one, don't we?
I think you do uh at this point, and I think that's demonstrated by what animal controls are you dealing with in this particular situation. Um obviously, it's like any other ordinance, you'd have that public comment for that um and then enact that as part of your municipal code, but it is possible.
Spot on.
I say we do that as we're trying to get, I mean, this is just my opinion, since we're we're having discussion around this, I think I think we go hard. Somebody said we go hard, I don't know, somebody somebody said that. I I say, I say we, I say we go hard. I say we we go ahead and do that, we're really just trying to, you know, curb the problem here and and try to get it somewhat under control. If we come to a point uh that we get it somewhat under control and we wanna move into, well, maybe you can breed, but you now you have a license, and maybe we can hold discussion around that. But I feel like, I mean, we're we're like, we're in a state of emergency here with with the animal control issue, just really getting well out of our hands throughout the county. But.
I agree, yeah.
That's that's my opinion. I don't know how it would work once implemented and in action, or if y'all have feedback in that, like around that.
Councilor Ripley, looks like you wanna.
Well, I I was, you know, okay, like my neighbors, they're little, they have two little dogs that procreate all the time. So they would be banned from breeding them, right?
If that's the direction we wanna take.
Or as current, as my understanding, council member, yes. Under um if they were to get a license, if we implemented a licensing program, they would have to have a license in order to do that. But then you're monitoring or you're able to kinda see who's legally allowed to do that. Um it's easier to do just flat-out ban because we can't show the nuisance and stuff like that. One thing, though, that's personal for me is you kinda painting all, you know, not all breeders of dogs are evil people. A lot of them are doing it very well and 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 appropriately and follow the rules and do it the way. And I don't think that's really your target. Um but maybe I'm wrong. But that's why my recommendation is is a license program to some degree because of that. That said, too, do we have any licensed breeders that are registered in the city? And if not, then maybe we don't need to worry about that.
Exactly.
Um you know, those are the things that, you know, because if you have an established breeder um that's licensed and all this stuff, that's a different duck. That could also be continued continued potentially as a as a uh allowed non-conforming use. So there's other, so the clean is the easiest way, it's probably just a flat.
Nope. Ban it. Um, Mr. Brown?
Wonder say something.
A point of clarification real quick, too. Remember, you're discussing the actual breeding of animals here, and this situ- I don't know how to phrase this. An accidental pregnancy, uh in this situation, it 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 occurs and you can make allowances for that in your municipal code in this particular situation. Again, you wanna temper that uh somebody, because then someone can take advantage of this. Well, I've had five accidents this month and now neighbors. So the idea is that you have to be able to articulate that in your code. So an actual ban on breeding means that you're specifically targeting retail sale and and breeding for for sale of of animals. So there's a difference.
Okay.
Well, very careful on the language we use.
I think Mr. Brown, you have something to say.
So just being a new guy on the block here, um I, there's a lot to this, there's a lot of pieces to this. Um the license in part, I'm all in favor of that. Um I do worry about the financial side of that, too. So if we start charging these fees and they're not able to pay those, so is the city gonna now start writing off these large amounts of dollars that we already don't have? So you know, that's a big word called deficit, so we don't wanna do that kinda stuff. And that's just me looking at it my way. Um I think some more conversation, um especially to how um Mr. Ripley presented. There there are some what-ifs in there. I think if we can get a list of what-ifs and how it impacts um the city um long-term, and probably some community input would really help us um a lot. And just to add to that, um I'm a proponent of asking for help. Um the Tri-Cities, Yakima, they're experts, so if we had some kinda listening session for that, that might help. Um I think we just, we pull in all the um resources that we have from the larger cities. I think that would be beneficial to us, especially um a huge savings before diving in. Save first, no no pain later. So I I know Pasco, larger city, I get it, but it's a lot of pieces to that. So I think Mr. Ripley did a good job at that, but I think we should.
Deputy Mayor.
Own in a little more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'll defer to Council.
Yeah, so I actually have a question, and maybe if you guys don't have the information right now, that's fine. But how many, how many dogs do we even have currently registered under the city right now? Cuz I would have liked to know that number. Because to be honest, I don't even think our community even registers them or is even aware, or they don't even know how to register their dogs.
I wouldn't disagree with that. I think one of the things that we need to do imminently is is kind of a campaign uh to, especially with the spring coming. Um and it didn't click until you said we just um do a campaign, getting folks to understand that. Yeah, in one year, what was it, twenty-three, you didn't get a bill, but it didn't mean we stopped. It was a glitch, you know? Um and we need to get everybody to understand that if you've got a dog, we need to, and I would recommend that we implement a um a grace period or a period of time where we're not gonna ask no questions, just come in and register your dog. But after this date, amnesty period.
Which is also very important as well, because a lot of people who, like they, if they, they're barely getting this knowledge, they're also afraid and saying, well, what if I go and they're gonna charge me a late fee or a punishment?
And you've gotta give them enough notice to acknowledge and recognize that people maybe only getting paid once a month. So you wanna on that amnesty period, at least forty-five days, I would say more like sixty. You've got sixty days from this date to this date to get your animal registered. Within seven days after that, patrols will start going around and just hit and oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, and I agree, and we're really gonna have to push that campaign because to be honest, now I don't even think we're getting and generating any income regarding any animal registration.
I I believe you're right, I mean, if 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 we are, it's very little. And um Deputy Mayor, my my question in regard to what Ben Riley said, like accidents, can can we require the spay and neuter? Is that, is that something that, cuz it it seems like if we're if we're banning breeding, we should require spay and neuter that.
I think, I I think in my notes I had during the forum, um one of the the rescuers actually said that Kennewick or or Richland, somewhere in the Tri-Cities, I'll have to go back to my notes, but they actually just implemented a a requirement um for spay and neuter.
Cuz I think that's something that would be helpful, uh you know, on top of the 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 breeding ban, because to Ben's point, I think, you know how it is, people, oh, they had another accident. And um so that that in itself, but but it also begs the question, is there anything too restrictive? Even when it comes to dogs, I I don't know.
There there's a a way to help with um the spay and neuter through licensing. So there can be no charge for a license. You just register a dog that is spayed or neutered, and then it's more, it's very high for an unspayed or neutered dog. That that helps to.
Yeah, that's that's great.
Responsible pet owners are going to spay and neuter and they're gonna get, you know, awarded for that versus.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a really good point, cuz that's what I'm thinking. There are some cities with those kinda things in place. Yeah.
And it gets a dog registered, and I like that idea.
A little off-topic, but I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor.
So is anyone aware or familiar, the City of Sunnyside offers those little like um badges that go on the dog's collar, that's the City of Sunnyside? Has Sunnyside ever done that, yeah, the tags? So Sunnyside does provide that?
We did, yeah, we need.
Okay.
We did tag, it was on your dog's collar.
Okay, cuz yeah, I know City of Toppinish does it. And so if we do that, that'd be really good for animal control as well, because if they pick up an animal and they don't have that tag, they can't get their dog back until they register their animal.
Then what do we do with the dog?
Well, I remember one of my previous dogs who crossed the Rainbow Bridge. Um uh I remember way back in the day, um uh the the vet, the vet here in Sunnyside, actually, I registered with them and um and then they gave me that little tag. Is that something, I don't know if we've lost that type, I don't know even if it was a collaboration between the the vet and the city at the time, or maybe even, you know, um working with our local vet, where there was, was it where their only vet in in the in the city to um to promote the pet registration.
It seems like mechanically we should be able to create that partnership. If if they're the ones seeing the dogs, I mean.
If it already was there at one point, I'd like.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I got the little, I think it was just paying in addition. And they told me, like, you know, you know, you have to register, you can register here, or you can go to City Hall.
Yeah, it seems like that'd be a perfect place to get the license, get spayed or neutered and one-stop shop. If if we can create that partnership and maybe have some sort of system where they can pay for it there, they reimburse us for the licensing fee, there has, there has to be a way we can do that. And I'm more than willing, and I know our staff is to to visit that, cuz that makes the most sense. Cuz it's hard to get somebody to come to City Hall and get a license.
Yeah, I I honestly just assumed, you know, about assumptions, that that was, that was, cuz that's the way I've always seen it. Um I'm I'm not aware of a vet, like in the Tri-Cities, it doesn't do that. So I just kind of assumed ours did, but you but you don't know, she may be.
Yeah, I I don't know, they 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 might still be doing it, they might, they might not from conversations with them. It seems like they have really dropped um all types of relationships with the city throughout the time. Um uh nobody was really reaching out to them. So I don't know if it currently exists, but I know like almost twenty years ago, it did. Um I don't know if it exists now, but if it doesn't, we'd contact them, we ask them, and if it doesn't, it'd be a good um partnership to start back up.
You get two sets of tags for your dog, one is a license from the city and the one from the vets are rabies confirmation.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think that they're two independent things, they don't, two separate things.
Yes.
So, Council, I know, I know that we could go all night talking about dogs and pets and um, you know, dog breeding ordinances and and sales. What what do we, what do we wanna do? What do we, what's the direction that Council wants to provide?
I agree with Derek and, you know, let's remove it completely, the breeding, or if we are, let's have a conversation. But I think for now, we should just remove it completely and wait to hear some pushback, right? And then have those conversations and then maybe change it.
I I like that, I like, I I didn't think we need to send a message.
Yeah.
That there's no more breeding in Sunnyside, um as legally as we can do it, no more sales. And increase these, you know, these fines and these fees. We if we really wanna do something, this is, I believe this is the way we need to do it. Um you know, I was looking at the at some of these fee schedules, right? We have a a a fee of a hundred and sixteen dollars for hobby kennel license. How many of those do we sell? Probably none, and how many of those are going on?
And frankly, a hundred and sixteen dollars for a hobby kennel license is.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's.
Twenty years.
One bag of food, two bags of food, at least for my dogs.
That's why I agree with Mr. Brown. I I don't think initiating fines right now is gonna be effective. Um I think we already live in a community where first, they're not expecting any um consequences to their lack of responsibility or their lack of or for irresponsible pet owners. Um and then two, we we already live in an impoverished community. So that's already, so I mean, I just stopped to think about the added layer of um what do you call it, of um just financial burden that we're gonna add to them. And 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 I really, I, knowing that people are not paying already any maybe citations if they've already been issued by previous ACOs or registration or anything like that, I I I'm not confident that if we do list fines in our ordinances, that they're actually gonna come through and pay them. So I just, I I agree with you, I I really just think it adds a layer, added layer of burden. Um and um I say we just outlaw it completely.
I agree, and and say a little bit about about that, Councilor Frosto, what you said. I mean, I I think we just, we can't go on.
Job, Derek, the enforcement's your job.
That's right, we we can't go on just not fining people because we think that they can't afford it. I mean, some of these, they're paying two thousand dollars for a dog, right? If you can afford a two thousand dollar dog, you can afford to license a dog.
Well, many of these dogs that that are found being dumped um or found out in the streets, I mean, I think if you're paying two thousand dollars, you're probably keeping that dog because it's making you money. But the ones that are being found, there's no um trace back to their owner. And that's what we're dealing on the daily. I say we go hard or we go home. I mean, I agree with you, I think we need to send a message.
Yep.
But.
Okay.
And then we've, definitely, Derek, to to your point, um we we talk about enforcement and how it's gonna actually work um out in in the community. I think implementation is a key component to all of this, so, yeah, that's.
So the direction is to keep exploring the banning?
One of the things I spoke with the um, some of the folks at the forum afterward, is I will try to have you guys something by April.
Okay.
Um if not before, it's just, I mean, the mayor just really, can you send me this in Word? Just so I, well, actually, I can use my Bluebeam, but it'd be easier if you've got.
I could forward it.
And I'll just start working off of what you got here, put stuff together, bet it with legal um other folks that I can think of, and then um, yeah. Then we'll discuss how you guys wanna deal with the public interaction piece.
Got it, thank you, Derek. Moving on. Item nine items from council members, um mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. Jackie, can, can you read off the vacant ones that we have?
One moment. So currently we have one vacancy in the lodging tax advisory committee. We have three vacancies in the Sunnyside Arts Commission and three vacancies in the Climate Resilience Advisory Team and one vacancy on council.
Do we have any that we need to approve in the rules committee? Any applications?
Not currently.
Not currently?
Um, I, did you have the one application?
Is that the, the one?
For the climate resilience advisory team?
You know, I need to, I, I know it was sent to me. I just need to find that so that, and I will find that tomorrow and, and get it on the, the agenda. Even though it's a study session, we, we can have action on that one, right?
Yes, we can. We can add in the public comment. So once you get it, we can send it to the rules subcommittee and then take action.
And Jackie, if I could ask you to post it again on Facebook, the vacancies and also for Altech, just make it make sure they know that it, they have to be a taxpayer. So they have to be a owner of a hotel, motel. You know, something like that. They just, there's requirements for that, for the Altech.
Yes, I will do that.
And also if there's anybody out there for, like Jackie was saying, for position one, is it position one? I think our deadline is coming up, March fifth. So if there's anybody out there that lives in, in District One, that wants to serve in city council and be part of these discussions that we have, go ahead and fill out, you know, I think there's an application or a resume they, that you send in.
Yes, and I can show, I can share my screen on how to get there. So on our website, you'll go here and then councils and commissions, District One vacancy. That information is available here along with an application and to verify the address is there. It's also available on the newsflash section here, same information.
Oh, perfect. The district map is there.
Thank you, Jackie. Counselor Foster, you have a question?
The district, I just for the record, I wanted you to maybe to talk about where the lines end.
Yes.
But there's, you linked it. Thank you for.
All right. There is an updated map that looks a little bit cleaner and I just received it from YV cog at the end of last week. So I'll replace it with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward, other reports, announcements and or questions by council, Counselor.
Nothing to report for today.
Counselor Ripley.
I have nothing to report, but I did want to mention, you know, the city manager gives his reports and the police chief and the fire chief and everybody puts their reports in there. But the citizens don't hear anything about that. You know, we used to have everybody say their reports and I do like it in the, your city manager one. But nobody knows what's going on with you guys because it's all in the city manager letter.
Would you like me to share that? I mean, I have no problem sharing that with the public. It's just, and, and it's written and nothing that I share with you guys, I'm not uncomfortable sharing with the public. It's just, it certainly is records requestable, you know, and that's, that's something. So yeah, I mean, it, it just depends on what the direction and it's certainly not intended to hide from the public. But, um, you know, you guys tell me and I, you know, I'm a prolific writer, so I, I don't.
I didn't know if you were saving time, you know, by putting it in the, in your city manager. Cause we used to, you know, the guys would tell us what was going on.
Oh, are you asking them to report?
It was being done like that before. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and I think.
Cause some of this stuff, you know, there was things that I was gonna write down and thank you guys for today. And I didn't write it down. So, but thank you guys. Thank you all.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I, we could revisit that. I mean, the intention is not to control the narrative or anything. It's just to, to be as concise as possible and, you know, not to have, you know, staff saying, well, well, here's, you know, it's another you go and here you go. It just.
Yeah.
So that.
I like to, I, so I actually agree with, with Counselor Ripley. You know, they have to be here. They have to listen to us. I think minimally we should give them opportunity to give their report to us. And I really miss hearing it from them. It's, it's nice to have it on email, which I think could still continue, but even like hearing it from them, I really, I, I miss that personally.
Then the people.
Yeah. Oh, that's no problem. I mean, if you guys want to hear from them directly, I'm, I'm good with that. And I don't want the public to think I was hiding anything because everything I do is records requestable. And, you know, I live a very public life. So that was just intended to kind of streamline, you know, these meetings and not to, because you guys, you guys digest a lot of information. So, but yeah, if, if that's the request of the council, absolutely. Um, we've got.
You almost give me a report. I think Chief Lehman exceptionally misses it maybe.
You know.
All right. Anything else, Counselor Ripley? That's it. Counselor Foster?
No, nothing.
And I don't have anything to report. So let's continue on to upcoming council meetings. City manager.
Uh, and I'll defer to Jackie.
Okay. Our upcoming meeting is March third. It's a study session and we have March third study session. We have a lot of discussion items, a surf soccer league presentation, a marijuana presentation, budget update and police department presentation. And we have March 10th, regular meeting, and then we will remove that study session.
Thank you, Jackie. And if I could go back on, on mine, I guess I, I, I do want to talk to council for the public safety meetings. Have you guys been getting the emails? Have you, have you heard from council if, if this, I think this Thursday, right? We said it.
February 27th, right?
February 27th at two or 1:00 P. M.
I think chief said 1:00 P. M. Works for him. Chief Habrick, does 1:00 P. M. Work for you on the 27th? Okay.
Tomorrow?
Oh, Darcy, the 27th.
So Counselor Foster, are you available for that, that day?
Is there any chance we can, is two available? I, I, I didn't know. We hadn't scheduled that. So I have a meeting with the court now at one o'clock. The judge has something he wants to go over.
I'm good for 2:00 P. M.
Okay. Sorry. I appreciate it.
No worries. You're good to. And the other counselor, I think Counselor Hart was going to be gone for a while.
Yes.
Is there any other counselor that would wish to serve on this Thursday's meeting for temporary? If not, you know.
This Thursday?
Yeah, this Thursday.
I got something going on.
Okay.
Do we have court? Well, do we, we don't even, do we have enough?
No, it's just three of us. Or it could be two of us, but.
I can be there.
So Counselor, okay. Counselor Vazquez, Counselor Foster and myself, along with Counselor Lehman, uh, no, Counselor Lehman, Chief Lehman. Well, you are a counselor, right? Moxie. So, and Chief Habrick, so Thursday, 2:00 P. M. At city hall. Okay.
You want it at the fire department or police?
Don't matter.
Just, I just have a quick question so I can prepare. Fireworks and a curfew, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So city hall? Yeah. All right.
Is this the youth curfew?
Yeah. Youth curfew and fireworks. Thank you, Jackie. And let's go, let's continue on to city manager report.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And a couple of things I wanted to get out there. First of all, welcome Irving Brown as our new HR manager. So really appreciative to have him here. Comes with some great credentials. So, you know, I wanted him to give himself the opportunity to introduce himself before I took away any of his thunder. So if you don't mind, kind of giving us the Cliff Notes version of, you know, who you are and where you're from. And, and just know I'm, I'm very appreciative to have you here.
Again, Deputy Mayor and City Council, oh, it's always hard to talk about yourself. My background stems from management, starting at about age 16 and up to current. Management has been, and people have been now my life story. So I love working with people. I love making it happen. I like a lot of moving parts. My managerial experience have been from a young manager, like I said, up into current managing at maximum. At one given time in a season, thirty-five hundred employees. So with a team staff of nine HR journalists, uh, under my supervision is a tough job, but it was a fun job. Just recently worked in Prosser for a year's project and then started my own HR consulting business on last year. So that's up and going, busy life. Also the president of the N W C chapter in the tri-cities, Washington. The Juneteenth Director as of last year for the Juneteenth celebrations that continue to go on. So there's much more to that. You'll find out later, but that's where I'm at right now. And now in this current role is just a blessing to kind of help unfold the beauty, I think, lies in Sunnyside. So collectively, I think we're going to do great things. And I think we all wear a lot of hats. I am in an HR role for Sunnyside. But I'm going to work as a potential constituent. I'm, I'm not moving, but constituent means I get busy within the community. And it's time that we be more inviting to our constituents. We need to say hello. We need to get out there and figure out what it is. So I'm looking forward to that and hear more from council and working with council with my past experience as a Pasco City Council member. That has been a blessed experience and getting to know your community is, it's just heart moving when you really get in there and take the gloves off and get in there with your community down from the dog shelters to, you know, sitting on the dais. So that's what I'm looking forward to doing. And so I thank City Manager Mike Gonzalez for thinking of me in such a way to fulfill this assignment. So from private sector to public sector is going to be a shift, but I'm a very quick learner. And we'll just use all my resources, which is some of you all, and we'll move forward. So I thank you all. I thank the city of Sunnyside for the opportunity. So God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor had one more thing to present. And so this coming Friday, we're going to say farewell to someone who has been an integral part of the city of Sunnyside for the past 10 years. Our Public Works Director, Raul Sanchez is heading over to his hometown of Grandview to work as their new wastewater supervisor. So, uh, you know, Raul started with us as the wastewater treatment operator supervisor. Took on the role of special projects and ultimately became a public works director. So have so much respect for his trajectory and, you know, how he's worked through the leadership positions. Uh, and I can say I've just, you know, since I've been on board, I've seen tremendous growth and I tried to get him to stay, but I, I know he's, he's tight with, with their guys over there and, and he's got some great relationships at Grandview. So I, I, I get it. But just to continue at every step, he's led with dedication, integrity, tireless work ethic. Whenever there's a challenge, Raul stepped up, not because he had to, but because who he is. He's a team player, a problem solver, a man of honesty and ethics, one of the best people you ever work with. Raul, your contributions to Sunnyside have left a lasting impact. Your leadership commitment have made a real difference in our city. I mean, he just garnered a, a grant slash loan through DWSRF for a couple million bucks. You know, he was working with our consultant, Cus, just saved us $750,000 on a well. So, you know, he's, he's done some really good things in just the past several months and just it's been a pleasure to watch that growth. So while we're going to miss you, we know Grandview is, is gaining a true professional, a really great leader. So Raul, I just want to thank you so much for what you've accomplished. We wish you nothing but success in this next chapter. Grandview is certainly lucky to have you. You'll always have a home in Sunnyside. If you want to come back, that door is open. Uh, let's give Raul a big round of applause. Thank you. Yep. Please say a few words.
I just want, I want to thank Sunnyside because Sunnyside has given me a lot of opportunity here. And to the roles that I've taken in the last 10 years here have really helped me develop in public works. I've been in, I was in public works already for 23 and a half years before I came to Sunnyside. But Sunnyside gave me the opportunity to take on some of the challenges that I, I was willing to take. But the Sunnyside gave me that opportunity and it's really helped me to grow in, in my profession. And so I will forever be grateful for this and it'll, it'll go with me wherever I go. So thank you. I want, thanks for, you know, I'm working with all of you. It's, it's been great. And thank you for the opportunity. So, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
I miss you.
Yes, thank you. You're not going to be too far off.
And is that it?
That's it, sir. Thank you.
Uh, no executive session for tonight. And there being no further business to come before council and without objection, I adjourn this meeting at 7:55.
That's a record.